Ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30. We want to welcome you, each of you, out to the City Council Meeting. This meeting is held on November the 12th, 2025, and it is an action meeting. It's 5:30. The meeting being held at the City Council Chambers, the City Office. We're honored this evening to have Director of the Canyon Country Communications Council, is that the way you like to call it, a Director of that, Ann Powell, to offer the invocation, after which the pledge will be led by Councilmember Wilkie.
Our beloved Father in Heaven, as we come before thee in these wonderful chambers, we're so very grateful to gather here, gather together as a community and to meet and make decisions. We're so very grateful for all those who serve for this community, especially the mayor. We're grateful for his service and the time and energy that he has spent these last many years serving Cedar City. We are grateful to be able to live in this country, to be able to hold meetings like this, and to open with prayer. We ask a blessing over this agenda this day, that as things are being decided, that they will be done in a calm manner. Grateful for all the Iron County residents who are here, and may thou be with those who will be making decisions, that they will keep the whole community in mind. Again, we're grateful for all that thou hast blessed us with, and we say these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the agenda order with one change. Can we move item six to number one spot? It's Jonathan's birthday today, and we don't want to make him wait for birthday cake to the end, so we may as well get that out of the way, so he can go home and enjoy his birthday.
Well, everything, yeah, I mean, they're on consent, so they would've gone pretty quick.
Basically the same.
Yeah, I guess it is.
That's a motion.
I'm fine with that.
You second it?
Second.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just really...
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I want to express appreciation to all of the people who participated and helped to make a wonderful evening the other night at the Heritage Theater for the birthday celebration, and particularly, of course, our own Mr. Scott Phillips plays an instrumental role in that every year, and it is an amazing thing that he does, and we appreciate him so much. It was great.
Thank you.
A dress rehearsal would have helped.
Yes, it would have. Yes, I couldn't agree more, Mayor. But it was a live performance.
But it was definitely a live performance, and it was au naturel in every way, and it was wonderful. And I'm just still just amazed that we have a community band that's that size and that depth of skill and talent. You know, my lips went numb a long time ago playing a trumpet, and I just can't imagine at this day trying to put that verbotal on that. But, boy, they could really do it, and it was really wonderful.
Yeah, they did a great job.
You got one of them right in front of you, Mayor. Mrs. Jett, and she plays in that band. She was there.
I just, it was a wonderful thing, and...
Thank you.
I appreciate the breaks that you let us ease our chops on this.
Yeah, that really does help a lot, doesn't it?
It was such entertaining dialogue.
It was just fun. It was just, it's a birthday party, and it was just fun. That's the way it's supposed to be, and thank you, and the public came and enjoyed it, and it was perfect. Thank you. Now, on the 3rd of December, I have some seats to an event. It's called 10,000 Beds, and some of you have been to that before, and I guess because of the donation I made, that I need to fill, somehow fill, eight seats. I think my wife can make it. It's a noon thing on the 12th, and if anyone would like...
The 12th or the 3rd?
I'm sorry. 12 noon on the 3rd.
3rd.
If anyone would like to join me, I'd love to tell Jean Christel, that I found some more people. That would be great. So if anyone...
I'll be there, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And you will, Ron?
One of my children is one of the speakers.
You will be there.
But I'm, I'm...
But you're gonna pay the money?
I already did.
Ah, well, I do too. Well, anybody that wants to come sit with me that day, please let me know, and I'll be glad to. I got a seat. Would you take you, Tom? Great. And they're gonna probably want a few dollars from you. Christian, that'd be great. It's out at the Marriott at noon.
What's that about, Mayor?
It's a fundraising to help, Ron, help us, to help young people who have had...
What, it's not just young people, and it's amazing what the Christels do. It's an organization called 10,000 Beds, and what they do is they try to find places that will give up one bed per year, or maybe two beds per year, to somebody who has an addiction. They concentrate mostly on drugs, alcohol, but there's also some spots where they send them, and they'll help them get gambling addictions, and also pornography-type addictions. And what they do is they find somebody who is willing to give what they call a scholarship. And if you know what, the literal success of what they do is unbelievable. I was sitting with them, I don't want to take too much time, but I was sitting with them, I know them quite well. I was sitting with them one day, and they got a call from a guy who lived in Chicago. He had got their name, he was homeless. He had a cellphone. He got their name, and they got, they helped him get into a treatment center in Phoenix, Arizona. And what they do is unbelievable. There's some, in my opinion, there's some places that are more successful than others, and I don't know if any of you know, most of these treatment places cost about $20,000 a month for one person, and they are all over the US, and they do a great work. So if somebody who cannot afford it, they can get them in there and help them. Nothing like somebody who has changed their life, given up those substance abuses, or whatever type of addiction they have, and changed, and they are, I don't want to go on too long, but if you know a lot of these people, sometimes they're way intelligent, really intelligent, and sometimes one little drink, one little drug triggers an addiction that goes on for years. This young man who they talked to, I think he was 25, 26, been addicted to whatever drug he could get a hold of for over 10 years. Success, I'm not sure how successful he was, but at least they got him into a spot where he could get some help. So it's a great organization, they do a great work, and they're definitely good people, so.
So I'd be glad to provide the lunch part of it, and you can bring a dollar or two to help with the cause. How about that?
Yep.
That'd be great. Thank you very much, and thank you for helping me out right there, because I know you're involved and deeply...
I am.
...involved there. Thank you. There is also, and make sure I'm got it this right, Mr. Phillips, I hope, Endurance Medical Center at 12:30 on the 13th.
Yeah.
Before we meet, I think that's...
I think that's correct, Mayor.
So, don't want to miss it this time. Keep me straight. And then remember that we are going to certify the election on the 18th at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, next Tuesday, 9:00 AM.
Next Tuesday at 9:00 AM.
Perfect.
All good? That's all the business I have. Councilmembers?
Yeah. Yeah, Mayor, I have a little laundry list. It was a very busy week. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, for being there last night, and Mayor Lake Nelson, I understand you were in the audience last night as well. Thank you very much, along with anyone else who's joined us. Celebrating birthdays is important, and I emphasized that last night, and we've had 174 of them, so thank you all who participated. I want to do a shout-out to our Historic Preservation Commission, which is a standing commission of the city, and they help put on the birthday each and every year, part of preserving our history and remembering stories from the past, and just want to thank them publicly for all the work they did. I also want to thank the volunteers that came out last Saturday and helped me undecorate our harvest downtown, so we could get ready for Santa Claus, and I appreciate everyone that came out and helped do that. A labor of love with all the fallen leaves and dead corn stalks is not quite as fun as when you put them up, but it's necessary. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend, well, three events. The first one was the wonderful Veterans Day program that the American Legion Post 74 did. Thank you, Scotty, and all your team for the great work you did yesterday over at our Vietnam War Memorial. It was very touching and very moving indeed. And then I attended the university's Veterans Day program at 11:00 AM at the ballroom, and, boy, when you hear that choir and that orchestra play Battle Hymn of the Republic, if you don't get chills, something's wrong with you. It was really very moving, and then last night, of course, we had a wonderful tribute to our veterans as well. So that's all the thanks and kudos. Now I've got some issues, Mr. Marshall, and I'm glad you're here tonight. I've noticed we have lights out on 600 South. There are two streetlights out. It is the, and I'm sorry, I don't have the poll numbers, but it is the second and the third light from the intersection of 600 and 300. As you're heading east, right there by those soccer fields, there's two lights in a row out there. We also have two lights out on the corner of 100 West and 200 West on 200 North, right there by the power company. Both of those are out. So that's just my ask for help there. And that concludes what I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Did those addresses, what was that last address?
100 and 200 West is on the south, the southwest corner of each of those streets, where those lights are located.
200 North.
200 North and 100 West, 200 North and 200 West.
I'm trying to put the power company there. I'm not...
That big power line that goes right over...
Got it, got it, okay. Good, thank you.
Mayor, I just have a couple things.
Please.
Good. Well, I just want to also congratulate Councilman Phillips and the group that put that together last night. I was also there. It was a great celebration, and a lot of hard work, and a lot of people don't know the work behind the scenes that Councilman Phillips does on all these things, and I don't know what we would do this time of year without him, so it'd be a little bit of a different city. And then also, I just wanted to say kudos to our fire department and our police department. Today, I was a couple of cars back to a large accident out on Airport Road and 200 North, and it was amazing to watch our police department show up and take care of a very large, I mean, it took up the entire intersection. No cars were moving in any direction for quite some time, but our boys showed up, and they did a good job of making, getting things done, and so I was able to sit there and watch it for a few minutes as we waited for traffic, so.
Did they get the brand-new fence again?
No. Luckily, this time it did not get the brand-new fence, but kudos to Chief. He'll pass that along to your deputies, and that was very good, so.
Thank you, staff. Staff, yes.
So this is just a follow-up, sure, David Johnson, Economic Development. Thank you. You always get me, every time. David Johnson, Economic Development. I just wanted to formally announce the two Smiths locations that are going in on South Main Street and up north, kind of by where the bowling alley is, just for way of, you know, public clarification. The Wincote is still moving forward. We saw things going forward on the north end. The Southern Smiths will occur first, and then it'll probably be, and that should open around the spring of '27, and then I'm guessing it's probably going to be 12 to 18 months before we see too much work on the north end, just by way of announcement. I don't know if you councilmembers have any specific questions, I'm sure you guys have got some questions, but we've been trying to respond and create clarity on Facebook, but you know how Facebook can be sometimes.
I don't know the correct term, but it's a mega Smiths, right?
Yeah.
Or the...
Smiths Marketplace, but you know what? I can pitch mega Smiths to them if you want.
Mega Smiths. It has more of a ring to it.
Yeah, it's like mega Smith.
It's 123,000 square feet.
And both of them will be about that size, so we're talking not just grocery, we're talking clothing and other options as well.
Sporting goods.
And I can tell you that those are good steps towards a lot of the other things that people are requesting, and so it's just a positive direction as far as retail growing and expanding in the area. One thing actually that I think is probably important to know, everybody's, a lot of people, I should say, have asked about traffic and congestion and all that. I just, one of the things that I've been putting out there and responding is, we have required traffic studies and improvements when large developments come to these areas, and so those things are being taken into consideration. Actually, quite honestly, a lot of comments that residents have asked or made, I have responded or thought to myself, you're thinking along the same lines. We are addressing those things. So just to, you know, assure everybody that the city is not just allowing things to just come in willy-nilly. We're being thoughtful in that approach, and grateful we have great expert staff to help address some of those needs.
David, I do have one question. On the south one, are they taking the entire parcel, or are there going to be pads for other smaller mid-sized box stores?
That's a great question. Yeah, there's going to be several pads for other smaller stores.
Huh?
It wouldn't be box stores.
Yeah, well, they wouldn't be box stores. They'd be more like, yeah, you see where, like the new Seven Brothers Burgers or Swig of those size. The one on the north end, there is a space for potential another, like, mid-sized box and some smaller retail pads as well.
Gotcha, okay.
So.
Well, I just wanted to say that three and a half years ago, three and three-quarters years ago, Mayor Green wanted to make sure that we got grocery stores on the north end. Well, guess what? Now we're gonna get two of them, Mayor.
Took four years.
Two of them. Yeah. It's really great, and that was one of the charges that I was given when I got here, was to really go hunt down that grocery, and really, the truth is, it's been a team effort, and there's a lot of synergy already happening in Cedar City, which makes it very easy for me to do my job and just pitch how wonderful Cedar City is, and then support that with analytics and, you know, support from the city's elected officials and administration in general. That goes a long way. Those relationships go a long way to help sell the numbers, so.
David, there's been some confusion. Is that in the city, the north end?
It is. It is in the city. It's right on the border of the city.
It is in the city.
Yeah, yeah.
We made sure of that.
So, any other questions from the elected officials?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mayor, I actually have one other question that staff could answer. Did they, I didn't notice it today. I didn't happen to travel north on Main, but yesterday I did, and that far-right lane traveling north on Main, right in front of Lynn's, it was like, it is not regularly, it's not normally, it's not normal width. Did anybody else happen to notice that?
You talking about Main Street?
Yes, as you're going down right in front of Lynn's.
They just changed it today.
Did they restripe it today?
They restripe it.
Okay, because yesterday...
They moved it all over.
Okay, because yesterday I had people calling me, and I drove down, I mean, my truck was wider than the lane. It was the weirdest thing for a short amount of time.
It got changed today.
Okay. I was just seeing if they restriped it.
Other staff? Seen none? Public comments? Your turn.
Ann Clark, I just wanted to ask you a question. With the new Smiths, what's happening with the old Smiths? I'm very concerned that some of these places that are moving out, they're just going to be empty buildings that go into ruin. Does anybody know?
Maybe Mr. Johnson could address that. That'd be a good question for Smiths.
Yeah. Well, I've actually, even before this was publicly announced, I've been working with them for a while, and we are already, they are waiting to, you know, really promote it until they made the announcement that they're moving, but the intent is to fill it with other space, and we're already working together on strategizing who we may approach for that. So I'm hoping we'll be able to fill that in, and the nice thing is, is my understanding, Smiths owns the building, so it makes it easier for them to sell to non-compete, because a lot of times when they lease, they hold on to rent, so that they won't have any competitors come in, but they can control that. So my hope is that we'll be able to see that building fill, or the space be filled. I know that building has a lot of, it's older, it has issues, so I think they're just trying to address some of that.
But I think Cedar has a record, pretty good record of filling in old grocery stores with other, I mean, you've got the old Albertsons where IFA is, you've got Cal Ranch where Walmart used to be, I mean, other stores, they look for those types of buildings.
I would just tell the community, be patient, because it takes time, at least in those larger types of buildings, to find those tenants, and, but we'll get there, and we'll fill it with something good that will benefit the community as a whole, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Scotty Harville, Post Adjutant for the Cedar City Post 74. I want to extend a heartfelt thank to all of our members and my fellow veterans for Cedar City on the city's effort to support veterans in promoting Americanism in our community. I especially want to thank Councilman Phillips for his participation in the Veterans Day ceremony at Veterans Park. And also, we want to thank Cedar City Fire Department and the staff of Parks and Recreation and over the 120 veterans and citizens that attended. American Legion Cedar City Post 74 is looking forward to participating in the upcoming year of American 250 events with Cedar City. Cedar City is a shining example of the way of Americanism in life. In closing, I thank you all again for your services to the city, citizens of Cedar City. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Assuming this is probably the appropriate place to do this, since there's probably not public comment when you get to your appointment.
You need to state your name.
So I'm Steve Nelson. Tonight, the council will be considering filling the vacant seat by Tyler Melling. I've had a few councilmembers, as well as citizens, kind of reach out to me to ask my opinion, being the incoming mayor, and we'll have the blessing to work with whoever you appoint. First, want to acknowledge that's your decision, not mine, but I did think it was valuable and worthwhile, just me expressing that I know three of the four candidates, and can obviously, I think, work well with anybody that you choose, but also wanted to particularly highlight the fact that, yes, the person that I ran against for mayor filed, and I have a great deal of respect for Phil, and feel very comfortable and competent, confident that we can work well together. We don't have an adversarial relationship. We have a good, positive friendship relationship, and he has strengths that I don't have, and vice versa, and I'm confident that we could work well together if that's the direction that you choose to go. So just wanted to make sure that was on record, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to get to that here in a few minutes. Any other public comments? Thank you. So we will begin with item number six.
Should we sing "Happy Birthday"?
So number six, we'll consider expenditures for the water well development.
29 never looked so good, Jonathan.
Exactly, exactly. Jonathan Stath, this is City Engineering Department. We just wanted to give you an update on the well development going on just south of 3000 North. We've been running the test pump over the past few days. Everything is looking really good. Up until a few minutes ago, unfortunately, the discharge head broke on the pump that they're using, and so they're shut down currently. But the good news is that they ran it long enough that they were able to see at least six hours of stabilized drawdown, and the drawdown is very good. It's only drawing down about 34 feet, which is excellent for this valley, and they're pumping, it was pumping at 1,800 gallons per minute. And just, when we provide that data to the state, they certify the well at two-thirds of that pumping rate, so that would be 1,200 gallons per minute. The sand content also looked very good. We'd like to see the sand a little bit lower, but it's down at about 10 parts per million. We'd like to see that down at about five, but we think when we pump it at a lower rate, that sand will come down.
Settle down, yeah.
Yeah, it's still a fairly low amount. So everything was looking good as we were running the test pump.
So we got a long enough of a sample for the state to be okay?
Yes. As long as, this chart doesn't quite show the full six hours, but, yeah, we did get a full six hours of stabilized drawdown. I do need to call the state tomorrow and just talk through a few things to see if we need to start it up again and gather a little bit more data. Again, I just found out about the problem we had a few minutes ago, so, but anyway, as far as what we've seen so far, everything looks good. The reason we brought this before you tonight was because we need to have the City Council decide whether to move forward with having the special sewer materials installed underneath the townhome buildings that are going in next door. And so we wanted to bring that to you. It looks like it's still going to be the $120,000 cost, based on what we're hearing today, and so we wanted to bring that forward to the City Council tonight.
And this is the actual pipe under the units themselves? We already did the stuff from the curb in.
They're currently working on it.
Yeah, okay.
There'll be one in the same, then the stub out.
Yeah, so the stubs were done, though. We already paid for those, or we agreed to that. Now this is from the stub location to actually under the unit.
It's actually all of it, isn't it? It's from all the way is that price.
That would be under all the units that need to have it done.
Building three, and then those additional units we talked about, right?
There's one unit on the building two.
Right.
So just one minor clarification then. So is it 120 more, or take away what we already said, what we already agreed to?
It's my understanding that's in addition to.
It's in addition to, okay. So it's another 120, okay.
Yes.
And so far, the first part was how much?
10, 12.
10, 12?
10, 12,000.
And my understanding is, Jonathan, in order for this to be a certified culinary well, this is a requirement that the state would put upon us to make sure, because it's in the radius of that 100 feet, correct?
Yes, yes.
And once they put the houses on there, that well's out of the options for cities, I believe.
Right. So, do you want to go through that cost analysis a little bit with us and the rundown, because it's coming out of, if we do this, it's coming out of the Martin's Flat Culinary Well Fund, correct?
Excuse me. We would need to, like, doing a budget revision to possibly move money out of the Martin's Flat Well. Kent, would you be able to pull up that, it should be on the last page of that, or on the second page of the information sheet? Thank you. So based on what we're seeing at Martin's Flat right now, we do have some excess funds based on drilling the test well. Obviously, if we end up doing a production well, we're going to have to add additional funds into it, but as it sits right now, there is additional money in there that could be moved to pay for that.
And that's that 188,470, is that correct?
Yes, that's the amount, based on the special sewer materials, the test pump.
Which is, I think, on the next sheet, if you want to scroll down, Kent, I think it's on the next sheet.
Yeah, I think if you keep going down one more.
There you go.
So that shows all the costs associated with the upfront costs for the Brent Hunter Well.
Jonathan, have we seen something from the builder just, because 120,000 is the up cost to do this, correct? It's not like, I mean, they're still paying, I guess, technically part of it too, right? They're still paying what they would have paid had we not done this. They're still paying their portion of the stuff underneath, correct? Are we seeing, have we seen that to make sure that, you get my question?
Yeah, so you're saying, you know, some of the labor and...
Well, yeah, it's like, are we paying the whole cost of putting that stuff in, or are we just paying the increase because we're switching the material?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'd like to maybe have Tyler Melling speak to that if he's able to.
I mean, again, I just want to make sure we're paying the increase. I don't want to, you know, I assume that's what's happening, and I just want to make sure.
Yes, Tyler Melling, no longer on the Cedar City Council. Hallelujah. It's great.
You say that every time.
You still have one more act.
No, that does not factor in, that is just the change order cost, the up charge.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get, the change order, that was the phrase I was trying to get.
We are, we have been working closely with staff as well on, and with the plumbing subcontractor to find alternative suppliers and everything else. The plumbing subcontractor still feels, feels like, 120 is the worst case for the change order, because there's labor... change order, because there's labor in that factoring in, that this, again, has to be all one piece, that's fusion joint welded in the trench, can't be assembled in the sun. Anyway, there's a lot of factors, and also, you know, if that is in wet and ice conditions in the middle of December, because that's when the parts would arrive, because we're, you know, we've delayed to accommodate the city. But with some of these alternative suppliers, he's a little more optimistic that as long as we can get the materials here in three weeks, and as long as the weather holds up, that number will come down, and there is no builder's fee in that, we'll supply, you know, itemized invoices and everything from the plumbing subcontractor.
But it won't exceed the 120?
It's not to exceed.
And just to reiterate, you will charge us less if it costs less, so.
Exactly, yes, yeah, this is, we just want a commitment from the city that this is our really not to exceed number. I mean, we're, you know, in full disclosure, there was something, when we gave the number for the exterior lines, there was about an $1,800 cost that we didn't factor in, and we're just going to eat that. And that's how it goes in construction, right? So, again, this is a, so this is a not to exceed cost, there's a little bit of cushion, expecting bad weather, and a shipping delay, we're a little more optimistic on that, and it should go down a little bit from that.
And we have to make the decision tonight for you to move forward.
Yeah, if we order parts tomorrow, then we make our timeline.
I know that, Jonathan, I, thank you. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Melling?
Uh, no. I have some other statement, but yeah, not for Mr. Melling.
Jonathan, I know that if we assume this, and we proceed on this well, and it's sounding pretty good at this point. The one advantage we have here, I think, with this well, because there's still going to be additional costs of getting it up to city standards, but it is so close to pipes and different things, that we don't have to pipe five and six miles to get the water into our system, so that's a real advantage, I think, to this project.
Yes, we could tie right into that, with distribution line there on 3000 North, so it'd be a very, very short run to tie it in. The other nice thing about this well, that it's already been grounded to municipal standards, so...
Oh yeah, did they run a camera, that was part of the reason why we pulled their pump, so we could run a camera down. Did the camera check, everything go okay?
We haven't run the camera down yet, unfortunately.
But it's only three years old, so I don't anticipate a problem.
We're planning to do that as soon as we can pull the, get the test pump out, so, but we have not run the camera yet.
Okay. No, I mean, I think, you know, it's something that, it looks like we're going to have to move forward with, I mean, I still, of course, with anything, it's with any type of well and exploration, right, there's obviously, I hate to use the word gamble, but I wish we were further along in the negotiations on the well itself, so that I actually knew 100%, I mean, because we're still in negotiations and all, you know, on the well itself, and so this kind of is, this is a big chunk of, you know, the 12,000 was one thing, this is a big chunk of change to, I mean, we're almost there, but we still haven't quite crossed over the finish line yet, and so I'm still a little nervous about it, but...
I'm pretty confident that we can get all this combined in this well in production less than doing a test drill, and then putting in, up to municipal standards. So I'm very, very confident, it's still going to be less money to get water in a pipe than any other thing that we're looking at currently, with all this involved, included, so, and that's just based on some, you know, conversations with...
Yeah, you've had them in...
Absolutely.
So, any further questions from anyone?
I'm excited, this is very promising. It's water in a pipeline.
Is that a motion, Mr.?
So 1,200 gallons is probably what we'll get.
How to make a motion on that? Are you prepared for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead.
That was a motion.
1,200 gallons is kind of where we're looking at?
So that, so 1,200 is what the state would certify, we don't necessarily have to pump it at that high of a rate, you know, we're probably being in the range somewhere of 1,000, I would guess, when we actually go to...
So we take about a third here.
Yeah, they'll take 30%, so we're at a good drawdown rate at 1,500, which means we probably could do 12 or so.
If we needed to.
If we needed to, and if, you know, if we do it a little lower, then it's more economical, and we don't pull the sentiment and stuff, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept the proposal to move forward on this well.
Expenditures for the water well, sir.
May I ask a question? Is that for the entire 188,470?
Yeah, do we want, do you want to do that all out of the Martins Flat and amend the budget at one time?
Well, we can't amend the budget. We'll do a formal budget amendment, but are you, is that part of your motion, the 188,470?
Correct.
Not the 120, you're talking about the whole...
Yeah, the 188,470.
Okay, is that what you're seconding?
I'm seconding.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I think that was everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy birthday. Have a good birthday.
Okay, we'll read the consent agenda, then. Item number one, approval of minutes dated October 22nd and 29th, 2025. Item number two, approved bills dated November 7th, 2025. Item number three, approved the appointment of Keith Naylor to the Board of Adjustments.
That's the wrong way, Jonathan, you gotta go the other way.
Yeah. Home is right, office is left.
Does he need an escort? Item number four, approved a change order for the CB Canyon View Detention Pond Landscape Restoration Project in the amount of $51,510.05. And item number five, approved the restoration of the 50.50 hours of sick leave for Zach Adams. I think, Mr. Phillips, you had a question on...
I did, before we make a motion on the consent agenda, I just have a couple of questions on the bills themselves. I notice there's a rather large expenditure for the action contracting on the wastewater treatment plant filtration. I just wanted to know where we are in the process of that project with this expenditure.
So, the underground work is substantially complete, the building is substantially complete, the units have been delivered and set. I think they need to do the interior plumbing and finish up whatever on the outside they need to finish up.
So we're nearing completion on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are they still expecting their January, one of that change order, we bumped the contract to January, are they still expecting to be...
As far as I know.
That's what I understood also, so...
Then my second question, anything to say there, Mayor? My second question was just...
He can't say anything.
Well, he can, he just, well, maybe not on that issue, but my question is on the, I noticed there's an expenditure of a little over $7,000 for Phase Two of the South Main Street Lighting. My question is, is that, are we finishing a payment, or are we actually started now on the next phase? Because it was budgeted in this fiscal year's budget.
Yeah, we've started on the second phase.
Great, okay. Those are my two questions, Mayor. So, with those questions being answered, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Item number seven, applicant interviews for the open city council. We have three applicants that will speak to us this evening. We will allow them time, I thought five minutes, sounds like a really good time, President Trump needs an hour and how many minutes, but I don't, I don't think that'll be necessary. So we will be first here from Elise Cardon, after which we'll hear from Jaden Reardon, and then we'll hear from Mr. Phil Schmidt.
So did we have someone drop out? Didn't we have four applicants at one time?
We did, and one dropped out.
Okay.
Welcome back, Colonel Tyler Melling. Mr. Melling?
Good evening, Mayor Green, and members of the council. Ooh, I need that, I guess.
Chris, calm down.
Am I okay right where I'm at?
Yes, ma'am.
First off, I ought to just, I know I'm not supposed to do this, probably, but thank you very much for everybody that showed up last night to the Cedar She's Birthday Party, it was fabulous. And it, it's amazing how many people are willing to volunteer, and I think that's, makes us a great community, is people willing to do that. My name is Elise Cardon, and I have lived in Cedar City my entire life. I love this town, and this is our town, and that's why I am seeking the opportunity to serve as a member of the council. I am a wife, a mother, and a grandmother. I work at a middle school, and I spend much of my free time volunteering with many city functions and on committees. It includes historic preservation, the America 250, downtown lighting, Reese's Across America, and I also helped with Cedar City Railroad Celebration, among others. My first experience, hope I can use you, Paul, my first experience with city council was in the early 2000s, when I worked very closely with them and with Paul Bitman, at the time as the city attorney. For us, we actually went to the state Capitol and advocated for changes for group home regulations. That experience taught me at that time the value of teamwork, persistence, and good communication in achieving meaningful results. Thank you. We were, sometimes we were not very nice, but you always put up with us and taught us an awful lot. I appreciate that. I consider myself a doer, and that I am someone who will do whatever is necessary to get things done. I don't have a personal agenda, and I have nothing to gain, other than the opportunity to celebrate and to serve our great community and its people. I've never run or held public office, but I do believe it takes people that are willing to put themselves out there to serve everyday citizens. I don't have all the answers, and I won't pretend I do, but I do promise that I will work hard to listen to the community, I will educate myself, and I will help find the right answers for this community. Thank you.
I think we should applaud. We don't always applaud, but thank you very much.
You might want to stay there, because there might be a few questions from council, I don't know.
I love questions.
I just want to express my gratitude to you, and Jaden, and Phil for being willing, it's great when we have good candidates to pick from, and so thank you for being willing.
I agree.
Ms. Cardon, I would like to know, and I know these are always the tough questions to ask, because there's three wonderful people, that I know each of them, but why do you think, and you've stated a lot of it, but why would you think that you'd be the best candidate for this council to select if you were to be selected tonight? And I do have a follow-up question.
Okay, best candidate, I think my willingness to serve the community, and my love of Cedar City, I think I can also give a different perspective, and a different voice.
Do you have the time to do it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So, if you were to be selected, what do you think would be, in your view, what are some of the biggest challenges that face this city and face this council over the next two years? What should we be looking at, in your view?
Wow.
I know, you're the first candidate, so it's tough.
Right, thanks. I think, I think growth, responsible growth, and we have to have growth. I would love for my children and grandchildren to live here, and so we have to have growth, but it needs to be responsible. I also think infrastructure, I think in a lot of the older places in town, parts of town, we need some infrastructure to keep updated, so we're not wasting money with, if we have leaks or anything else like that, I think infrastructure.
Yeah.
And then also, you know, always water, always water.
I thought for sure you were going to say something about preserving buildings.
Well, you know what, I've been here enough, I'm sure that everybody knows that one.
Yeah.
Definitely saving some old buildings.
Sure.
So...
Thank you, thank you.
You are welcome.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, I just want to echo a little bit of what Councilman Cox says, which was just thanking you, and both Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Reardon, and, you know, as, I've told this to a few people, this is probably one of the heavier decisions I think I've ever had to make in the two years, the two years I've been on council, at least. I mean, the five of us have to decide who gets to, you know, represent one-fifth of the vote of the citizens of this entire city, and it's big, I just want people to know that this is something that hopefully we're all taking very seriously, I'm sure we're all taking very seriously, and so I just want to thank you for being here, and for sticking your neck out there, and, you know, these things don't come lightly, and so, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else?
Ms. Cardon, I appreciate it.
Again, appreciate all of you, I was very pleased to see that all of the candidates, Hannah, they're over there. That all of the candidates are very capable people, you know, I've worked with you personally on different issues, I've worked with Jaden, I've worked with Phil, and it's, anyway, I'm very glad that we have three great choices to choose from, and really appreciate you putting your foot forward.
I agree with you.
Cedar City will be in good hands.
Yes, I agree. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Reardon, please.
You got a fan club. I love it. Hello, my name is Jaden Reardon. I was born and raised in Cedar City. I have a wonderful family, my parents moved here to go to college, my dad owns a business here, a cabinet shop. Ever since I was little, I really thought Cedar City was quite magical. As I've grown older, as my husband Barry and I purchased the pub, I've learned just how good Cedar City can be to people. There is a lot of support in this community, and my reason for wanting to run for city council, or wanting to fill this vacant spot, is to be able to give back what I've been given, as far as that community goes. I think, for me, Cedar City is a special place because of the people that live here. They're willing to give way more than you would ever imagine. I'm in Dancing with the Stars next week, and as part of that fundraising, I've been fundraising, and it really blows my mind, just the generosity of this community. I think that, at the heart of everyone that lives here, family is a big value, family values, giving to the community, those are values that I have as well, making sure that we have a place that we can raise families, that our children can stay, a place for all of our kids to, to be able to grow up and see the greatness that Cedar City has to offer. So, that is me.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the same question, and of course, you get the, you get the time to think about it a little bit, right? So from your viewpoint, what do you think the greatest challenges are facing Cedar City, and how would you serve on the council to further those?
Yeah, so I think, piggybacking off of what Elise said, I do believe that growth is an issue facing the city. I think growth is inevitable, but we have to be on top of that, and it has to be controlled growth. We have to be prepared for when that growth comes, so that we're not scrambling, trying to widen roads or build the infrastructure. Water, obviously, is a big issue, making sure that we have the water to sustain people who are currently here, and those who look forward to coming here. I think another part that would set me apart as well would be, I see myself as a visionary person. I believe that I see, I have a vision for the city, I know where I can go, and I know how to, whether I know it now or not, I know how to go about achieving that vision and making it reality.
So that kind of would be your reason why you're also the one candidate we should consider? Because that was my second question.
Yeah.
You kind of answered that as well. Okay.
That's my question.
No, I think, I mean, again, I want to personally thank you for, you know, sticking your neck out there, and we all know what it's like, and, you know, one thing that I meant to also mention after Elise was up here is, you know, I was somebody, when I ran for council, I ran once, and unfortunately didn't win, and then, you know, at that point I had a decision to make, and that was, you know, I wanted to keep giving back for the community, and somebody told me, just double down and serve even more. And so that would be my advice to everybody tonight, is, you know, if things don't go tonight, maybe the way that you're hoping is, you know, double down and serve even more, and the community will recognize that, and then, one day, if it continues to be your desire to be up here, that I know that that can happen. Because that was me, I, you know, I lost once, and I thought, well, I'm going to double down and just show them how much I want to serve, and next time they're going to choose me, and that's what happened. So that would be my only advice to everybody who's, to the three that are here tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
First, I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. I've had quite an experience running for the mayor position over the last two or three months, and I appreciate Steve, you know, Steve and I talked in the very beginning, and we, I thought we ran a very respectable race.
You did.
And some of the best parts about that is that I got to know a lot more people, a lot better than what I did, and so I really appreciated that experience. As this came... As this came open, originally, I thought, you know, I don't know if I will or not, but as I talked to quite a few people and some very dear friends, and I thought, you know, I still have a lot to offer. And I understand the city. I've been working with the city for over 30 years. I've done a lot of things for the city, and a lot of that I really won't tell you about. That's kind of how we work, but I think a lot of you know that we've been involved in helping lots of organizations. Had a wonderful, great experience with the Youth Livestock, the Care and Share, the Women's Crisis Center, but we're kind of involved in probably a little bit different way than some people might know it, and I really don't like to say a lot about it. My... The thing that I would run for this position is, one, I think I helped fill a gap. If I look at the city council, they're all good men. And as I look at the mayor and the future mayor, and I think I bring something that a little bit more experience with some of the infrastructure things around town, and I think that I can help on that. I've known the city for a long time, been involved with many things, and I have a great working relationship with the city staff and with the city employees. In fact, just the other day, Matt and I were talking about some of the things with water and going over some things with Eric on the roads, and I just really appreciate them and grateful for what they do. So, I thought, you know what? I'm still young. I'm putting my name in and appreciate the opportunity to run, and if we can help, we'd like to do so.
So, my first question is, did your wife know about this before you did it? She's going to go buy another car.
I have to tell you. I have to tell you, when we knew how the election results were, my daughter called me, and she goes, "Dad," she goes, "you have made Mom so happy because I lost." She goes, "Mom is just in such a great mood." And this was later in the day, and I go, "Well, have you talked to her?" I said, "When did you talk to her?" And she goes, "Oh, it was this morning." I said, "You might want to call her back because I just put my name in for the city council spot." Yes, she knows.
No, I figured she did, but I just thought I had to, you know, so we had the mayor deal.
It was a great story.
Yeah. So, can you tell me, and I think I know the answer, but I want to hear it out of your mouth, what do you think the greatest challenges, in your view, if you were on the council, that you could help solve over the next couple of years?
Well, you know, in our campaign, I run a team. Together, everybody achieves more, and I think it's really important that we work together as a team. And there's a lot of things we can do, but boy, I tell you, the roads and the traffic, since I've been doing this and paying more attention to that, there are just some real traffic issues down on South Main by the Maverick Station. Highway 56 is... There are just so many roads that are just getting really plugged up with traffic. That's going to take a working relationship with staff, with city council. It's also going to take a working relationship with UDOT, which I have a good relationship with them, and the county. And I talked to Rich a little bit. It's going to be some things that we're going to have to work on. The water situation, you know, there's three things for water. There's a water source, there's water supply, and then there's the piping and the infrastructure. And then, each one of those has their own little unique things that needs to be done, but I think that I can help on that. Public safety, you know, I know we have a $10 million plan possibly for the fire station out on Westview. I'd love to see that for $4 million and see if we can't help put that together and maybe do some design-build things and options to make that come to fruition. I think $10 million is a little high, but I'd like to see if we can support the fire people and the police station. We've got to put some fire stations out and about because we're getting the houses now. We're getting too far out of bounds, and we're... The insurance and everything else is starting to get high. So, I think there's a lot of things, but I know... Well, the campaign really helped me. I didn't know Carter, and I didn't know Scott, and I just think that getting to know you guys, and I think we just sit down and talk, and we can work out a lot of things.
How do you think you're the best candidate for this position if you were to be elected?
Now, you know, my dad beat me when I was young for talking about myself. That's a hard thing to...
I know. It's a very hard thing.
And I appreciate the other candidates. I don't know Lisa, but I know Jaden. In fact, he painted the wall in our house. I think that my 50 years of construction experience and working on roads, water, sewer, and all those kind of things, and working with UDOT and the county and all those people, I think my experience is very valuable. And I understand those things that are going on in the city. I've worked on a lot of them, and I know the people. So, I would say that my experience on doing those things and helping and... You know, it's just like an example of the fire hydrant the other day at the airport. I talked to Tyler, and Tyler goes, he says, "Phil," he says, "we got a bid for $12,000 to fix the fire hydrant." And I said, "Well, Tyler," I said, "if you wait just a little bit," I said, "let me take a look at it and see." So, we went over, we took it apart. We didn't dig it up, but you know where it is now. It's all new concrete poured around there. I said, "Let's just see first what's going on." And so, I said, "Hold off on your bid." Well, we took it apart. The shaft was bent, the coupling was broke. We were able to fix it. I think it ended up costing about $1,000, and we were able to save quite a bit of money on it. And I think that's my expertise is what I would bring to the table.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Would it be a tie or a no-tie guy?
You know, I'm going to follow the example of my leaders.
Oh, man.
Right now, I see...
He's been running for the office.
We have a little combination of both here, so...
There is an unwritten rule, but it's unwritten.
But I will tell you, I won't wear my muddy boots to the office. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think that counts for number seven. Number eight is up to you to decide how you would like to handle this now, and that is to vote to fill the city council seat. How would you like...
And just so I understand, I mean, we're actually... Whoever we do choose, they're actually being sworn in tonight, correct? If they so choose.
They can be, or if... I think everybody has their families here, and they could be sworn in, but if there's a reason they would like to wait until next council meeting, I think they could do that as well.
I just wanted to say before I cast my vote, because we've talked a little bit about this, but obviously, in any kind of a race, there's someone that's going to win and someone that is not. But all of you, in my eyes, since I've worked with every one of you, are winners, and regardless of the outcome, I hope that A, you will continue to serve the community, and you will continue and think about two years from now. There will be three council seats open two years from now. So, I just want to say that all of you would be qualified to sit up here, and I hope that you will not do anything that you say, "Oh, gosh, they didn't vote for me, so I'm done with them." I hope that doesn't happen because I'm friends with all of you, and I want to be able to see you all tomorrow and say hello to you tomorrow.
You know, Mayor, my final thing I wanted to say was, you know, as we approached the deadline for the, you know, for the filings, and there wasn't really much... Nobody... We had one person who had filed, and so, I actually personally reached out to all three of these people and, you know, and asked them, I'm sure like many other people did, and asked them to consider this, and in the end, they all decided to file. I mean, I didn't know who was going to, and so, when I... I truly mean what I said when I feel like the citizens of Cedar City tonight, whoever gets chosen, you're getting somebody who will represent the citizens well and who I think will do a very good job. So, we're in a... I mean, we're in a very good position to have these three wonderful people put their hat in the ring, and I'm just excited to move forward and work with whoever gets chosen and so.
And Elise, if you are chosen, you don't need to wear a tie.
And I guess one question I have about the process here. So, we have these little ballots here. Is this by design, like a secret ballot process? Is this an open vote? I thought it was an open vote.
So, you're going to fill the ballot out. We'll collect them. We'll announce the results. The ballots will be published, so you're in an awkward position, and everybody will know how you vote.
So, everybody will know.
That's what I thought.
The reason we decided to do it this way was so that as we do, if we were to do a roll call vote, that he doesn't... What he votes doesn't influence how you might feel.
But they will still be public.
But it will still be public. We're going to read who voted how.
It'll be public at the end instead of...
So, please write your name on it.
They've already on it.
She's already on it like blue blood.
I have all these extras, and they all say Mayor Green. I don't think I'm going to...
So, that's all. I was just so...
Vote early, vote often, Mayor.
Influence each other.
Well, and if that's the case, I'll... I have some comments on, you know, why I feel the way I do, and it's the same way I felt when I announced my resignation and how I felt about the process, even though some of the elements have changed and all. But so as to not, you know, sway any of my fellow council members, I'll save those comments for after the vote.
Well, and I just want to express my appreciation to all of you who have put your name in there. I'm glad you did. It's kind of tough, and it's... There's a lot of time that can be spent. There's a lot of time that can't be spent. It just depends on what you want to get out of it. It's been a great learning experience, and whoever gets in there, it's different than what I thought by quite a bit, and I appreciate you putting your name out there and putting your fingers on the line, so.
So, should we vote?
Yeah, let's do it. One of you going to come collect?
I guess that's me.
Oh!
Thank you, Mayor.
And I suppose, I mean, should we just have him read who voted how, or do you want to...
Sure.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, Mayor.
It's going to be public anyway.
Yeah, it's going to be public anyway, so.
Okay. It is 4-1. Mr. Phillips voted for Phil Schmidt. Mr. Riddle voted for Phil Schmidt. Mr. Wilke voted for Elise Carden. Mr. Cox voted for Phil Schmidt, and Mr. Melling voted for Mr. Phil Schmidt.
Congratulations, Mr. Phil Schmidt.
Congratulations. So, before, Mayor... Oh, sorry.
Now, Mr. Schmidt, we are prepared to swear you in tonight, if you'd like to do that now. Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Mayor, I'd like to make one quick comment. Do you haven't had anybody from the Fiddler's area, Fiddler's Canyon area, for 25, 30 years that I know of?
It's true.
And now we have...
Now, we do.
For the Fiddler's Canyon area.
That's right. That's right. And if your wife or family have a camera that they want to get pictures of you being sworn in...
You want to come take pictures of this, I'm sure.
You can do that. Phil, Mr. Schmidt, if you'll come around.
She didn't bring her phone, Phil. Do you have your phone on you? Your wife didn't bring her phone. Do you have your phone?
I'm doing it.
Oh, okay.
If you break my phone. You did shake. I can see that.
Now you start getting sworn out.
Now, Mr. Schmidt, if you'll...
Now you start getting sworn out, is what you said.
Shake hands, and then, when you're done, go back and take your seat.
Now that you're part of the voting.
Congratulations, Phil.
Now, before Mr. Schmidt joins these brave individuals up here on the stand, I'd just like to say again, I appreciate those others who put their names in. You know, at the end of the day, Mr. Schmidt has had several thousand individuals from the city voice their support. I'm glad those people will feel heard and that they'll have a voice. And anyway, again, appreciate my fellow council members here and carrying the torch forward.
Thank you. Anyone else want to have something that they would like to say that... Okay. Mr. Schmidt, if you'll come and take your place right there on the end, and then, we will give you a chance to vote.
We'll let you do your first matter of business.
First matter of business, I think, usually starts with Mr. Phillips.
Mayor, I would move that we adjourn this action meeting of November the 12th, 2025.
I would second that.
Hey.
And we'll have a call by name, starting with Mr. Phillips.
Aye.
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 There we go. We're done.